Everybody ready? Thirty seconds to go. Showtime.
Two lights on. Fred's doing the praying.
Am I in that? Oh, cool.
You want to be okay? In ten seconds. Good evening. Calls awarded. And have a roll call, please.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Fred Glenn.
Present.
Jeff Hearn.
Here.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Rick McKee.
Present.
Steve Swartz.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a forum.
Thank you very much. And we'll start with the invocation and pledge allegiance.
He's already had him pray his own way. Heavenly Father, please look over us in this very trying time. A lot of our citizens are either out of work or are forced home. A lot of our community is confused. And hopefully we can provide some type of leadership and show, you know, this is what this meeting tonight, as little as that means to some, we can do it what we can. Amen. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for our minutes from our April first meeting, do they have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll do a roll call on that. Roll call, please. Thank you.
Ken Alexander. Brad Beaver.
Aye.
Fred Glenn.
Aye.
Jeff Hearn.
Aye.
Amy Masalomani.
Aye.
Rick McKee.
Aye.
Steve Swartz.
Aye.
That passes seven oh. Thank you very much. Public comments. Open for public comments. Don't see any things, anyone, so we will close the public comment period. Under committee officer reports, for myself, again, I want to thank everybody and for the virtual meeting we did in April and for the extra work that Dawn and Robin and Chris Mertens and his staff did to help us do that. I appreciate it. And also I want to give recognition to Jeff Schimmer for the 2019 year end report that we received by email. And I printed it out. And numbers are very, very telling about how the county is growing and how well our communications department works. Two things just to mention, both for ourselves and for citizens. Smart 911 was implemented and it helps give a more accurate cell phone location. So if you haven't signed up for it, I would suggest you might do it. I think it's smart911.com. And then Pulse Point is a new cellular phone app that will let people that are trained in CPR know that there's a cardiac arrest situation near their vicinity and they can be notified. So those are two points that Jeff had in his report. And again, it's a very good report. Secondly, I want to compliment Shane Booker of EMA and the commissioners for the leadership and all they're doing in terms of guiding the county during the current pandemic. So I appreciate that. And then with that, I'll turn to Amy for Vice President.
Yes, I do have one thing I'd like to mention. I want to commend Carol Sorete and members of the newly formed Hamilton County Workforce Recovery Task Force. We had our second meeting this weekend. We were awarded, due date of award, a $5,000 grant that is to help develop a job and educational opportunities fair. So there's been discussion about virtual, potentially a virtual or hybrid job fair and how to continue to develop more growth for the task force and things we'd like to do all in the report back. But it's been, it's been a great group to work with thus far. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Highway, we did not meet. I had a brief conversation with Joel German regarding 146th Street West expansion. It's kind of, I would say, either stalled or it's been slow moving. And Joel indicated they've had some pipeline issues. It's added some delays. But it should be the section from town to Shelbourne, excuse me, Shelbourne to, maybe that's it. Yeah, town to Shelbourne, should be finished later this year.
They're sort of working with the Shelbourne to county line at the same time, doing clearing and that sort of thing. But I drive that quite a bit and I just wanted to find out from Joel. So finance, Brad?
Yeah, I wanted to go over the minutes from the finance committee we had the other day. It was a virtual meeting. We met with Mike Reuter, the finance committee did. We had a kind of a wide ranging discussion. And I asked Mike if he could make tonight's meeting, but he had something previously planned. I think some of our members wanted to hear from him. But I wanted to go over several things in the meeting and I think everybody understands the financial condition of the county, since we're all members of the county council. But what we're, what we're looking for going forward from today into the next six months and even the next year, and while our, our finances are in pretty good shape, I wanted, wanted you to look at the finance meeting minutes and about the third paragraph down where Mike points out that 80% of the state budget is based on sales tax and income tax. And as, as you probably know, when you get into a recessionary period, sales tax and incomes tax takes a dive first. As soon as people start not working or not buying, that drops off the hill right away. We're already into that. So their budget is based mainly on those income taxes. And while they have a $2 billion surplus, if, if we don't get started back up pretty soon, Mike estimates they'll burn through half of that in the first six months. So that shows you the, that gives you an indication of what the state's position is going to be in, in six months if things don't rev up real quick. Now, if you, I'm not going to go through everything, but myself, Steve Swartz, Rick McKee, we were here years ago when we had our last recession. And so we got a pretty good idea of what's coming down the road. So the other members weren't here. I'm sure they experienced it also. But in our particular case, a little over half of our, our, our budget is income tax and a little under half of our budget is property tax. Property tax is reasonably stable. That does not, is not immediately or even in the long term much affected because most people don't give up their property in a recession. While income tax, like I said previously, dives off immediately. So the money that we get from income tax on, on all the things that are supported with that will drop off. They're probably dropping off while we speak. Going forward, keep in mind that, that we are always a year in arrears. So we will be getting last year's money this year. So while we're in good shape financially and will be for the rest of this year, because even our special distribution is coming to us, it is a special distribution from a year ago. So things were good a year ago. So we're in good shape. We're going to be in good shape. But the money we have has to last us through two years because even a year from now, we'll be getting into spending the money that was taken in now, which is our income deck will be way down. So I want you to review this, these minutes. I'll talk to Mike again, see when he can come in and talk to us in person. But it lays out a pretty good parameter of what we can expect going forward. We're in good shape now. It behooves us to spend wisely because the cash balances we have now need to last us through two years so that when the economy starts picking back up, we will be getting income from a year ago. So we won't notice that or we won't get the benefit of the economy picking up for a year in reserve. Everybody with me on that?
I got you.
There's a lot of stuff he went into on that. I won't go through all of it. But the, the state's financial position, position will deteriorate within the next six months. Ours is in good shape and will be in good shape for the next year. But we need to make our cash balances last two years. That's really all I had to say. Rick, you got anything else you want to add to that?
Well, no, the, yes, I do. The couple of things that Mike said, you know, the more immediate things we're going to see a decrease in is, as we know, food and beverage, inkeeper's taxes, Brenda's seen. Interest income, because interest rates are zero. And the gaming tax that is shared by all the counties, that's going to go down immediately. And Brad, just be a little more specific. You're right on. The state goes on their fiscal year and so we're looking at the money we've got from this year is from July of 18 to June of 2019. And then so July of 2019 to June of 2020 is what next year is going to be. So we'll have half of a good year next, last year, and then the half of the bad year now that will be that. And then 2022 is probably really when it's going to hit, as Brad alluded to, you know, two years away. So Mike's word, and I called him yesterday, Brad, because I wanted to see if he might still be in town. He is not. He is out of state. But he just said again, caution is the best advice he gave us just to be steady and go slow in terms of spending, so.
Rick, he did, he did mention as well, I don't know if this is the right moment to talk about the impact of the health department related to Fishers, but there, I don't have the minutes in front of me since I'm not present there. But as far as, he didn't foresee a massive impact for the county itself from a fiscal perspective. If I'm not mistaken, then you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think that he mentioned to us the impact was, what he, he estimated it to be for the rest of this year, like $200,000 would be the impact to us by Fishers taking off on their own health.
We're like, that's $400,000 a year is what we're looking at.
No, I don't think so because, and I don't know if we want to ask Barry, but the $200,000 was fees from Fishers and then there's like $600,000 in property tax.
Reuter does not feel like our tax rate will be impacted no matter what. And the fees are what we're talking about. But the truth of the matter is, we can review these minutes and take that up when we have our joint meeting with the commissioners. What is that, a week from now?
The fifteenth.
The eleventh.
I'll have it the other month.
We have that, review these and then everybody will be on the same page as to what the financial impact of that will be when we have that joint meeting with the commissioners and the health department.
That's a virtual meeting, right?
Amy, to, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
To maybe address what you're saying, Amy. And again, Chris Jeter had looked at it with Mike Howard. And then Mike was saying that the, the money that Fishers thinks they're going to get, say directly from us, is part of our overall levy and we may not lose that. It may just shift to general fund and parks. Health department would go down a little bit, but we would still, you know, have the money that we have today just redistribute it. And so it would be a tax increase for people in Fishers.
Thank you.
Wow, yeah. Are you finished, Brad?
I am.
You guys don't have anything else on that?
No, no.
Again, I thought that they were great, great minutes and great meetings. So thanks, Dawn, Robin, everybody for that. Personnel?
We did not meet, although we did have a few polls to address and those will be found later in your agenda tonight.
Okay. Miscellaneous, anyone?
I just have one item, Mr. Chairman, on miscellaneous, community corrections. The Community Corrections Advisory Board did not meet this past month. They had no pressing business and we will meet, we will meet in June.
Okay.
Kind of delay, we are set to meet in June.
All right.
That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Rick, this is Ken.
Yes.
I didn't get to mention this in the highway department, but when I spoke with them, I just wanted to make sure everyone else has a note. Coming from the construction industry, many projects have been delayed and cost of being run up because of extra precautions for the COVID-19 response. And then speaking with them, they had not had any impacts on any of those projects moving forward. And I know with our fiscal plan being under some scrutiny with the, the revenue changes, I just wanted to make sure that people were aware that those projects are still moving forward and they're on schedule and on budget based on the conversations I had with Joel as well.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Unfinished, we have nothing tabled. We have a Parks Board appointment.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to take that off the table.
I'll second the motion. Thank you. Any other discussion for Mr. Tom Clover as the one and only?
Do you devote your vote on?
I'm sorry. I know, I'm just asking if we had any other, but nobody else, so. Oh, were we going to say Brad? I'm sorry.
Well, it's on table.
We need to.
I apologize. I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. I make a call vote to untable, please.
Alexander.
Yes.
Beaver.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Hearn.
Yes.
Masalomani.
Yes.
McKee.
Yes.
Swartz.
Yes. That passes unanimously. Now, have a motion to approve?
Or we approve this, we did get one request, I think there's from William Howard. I got that letter and I think, did anybody else get a letter from William Howard?
No, I did not.
I did not.
I, I, I received, Fred, this is Ken. I received an email correspondence and I just, I want to make sure that the public that might be listening or participating in our council meeting, we're going to do as, as good a job as we can to fill these positions with people that are expressing interest in getting people involved in our government. And part of that require, that requirement is that people need to seek out these positions officially and engage their council people. So I, while we have one official, one official, official request, that's the one I'm going to be supporting, even though people have reached out to me to provide a verbal response. But I, I just want to empower people to say, to reach out to us when you have interests and you see opportunities to get engaged in our government.
Great. You have a motion.
I'll make a motion for Tom Clover.
I'll second the motion. Thank you.
And a roll call vote, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Beaver.
Yes.
Glenn.
Yes.
Hearn.
Aye.
Masalomani.
Aye.
McKee.
Aye.
Swartz.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. Approval of vendor claims.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Amy seconds. And a roll call vote.
Alexander.
Aye.
Beaver.
Aye.
Glenn.
Aye.
Hearn.
Aye.
Masalomani.
Aye.
McKee.
Aye.
Swartz.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. And now we have resolution, I'm going to guess CC 05062020-01, a resolution of the Hamilton County Council incorporating funds for the establishment of a small business resilience grant.
I'm going to make a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll second.
Just on this part.
Discussion?
Discussion is, can I speak?
Me, now.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. The, this part right here is just the resolutions. It looks like on the agenda, we'll be discussing the funding amount for that under the general fund request. Am I correct?
Yes.
So that'll be a different line item. But this right here is just the legal resolution for it that Mr. Jeter put. So if you kind of want to scan over it, it kind of, it kind of basically takes the application that we put together and puts it into legal form.
So this is the same thing as the Hamilton County Stabilization Fund?
Yeah, it's, it's the same deal, yes.
Oh, we have a different title.
Yeah.
Well, Robin had some guy that wanted to, did not find with the language, as long as it says the exact same thing, good.
Would you like to explain what this is then?
Basically, let's get to the funding portion and then.
Oh, wait till then.
Yeah, we'll get, then if you want to, if you want to get deeper into it now, we can. But we got to get to the funding and the application portion is in here as well, so.
Okay.
All right.
I'd just like to say I appreciate Fred taking this on and leading with this. I appreciate his ideas and everything with it.
Thank you.
So I have a clarification question. I know that there had been some figures that had been thrown out there and I know it states obviously in the resolution 250,000. So was that a firm number just based on?
I was going to, I was going to address that in this, but we got to get to, we're in the, get to the part in the general fund. We're going to discuss that actual number. Because if you look on the next page.
I just didn't know because it's in the resolution. It states in the resolution if we needed to address that prior to.
Oh, that's a good question. Do we need to address that if, if we would, it would just go back and change, wouldn't it, Chris? If we change that in the general, if we, if we looked at that ahead of time, if we decided to do that? Okay, all right, okay. I mean, so looking at this, if we want to do it that way, we can do the full discussion now. Does that, did everybody get the application that was passed out?
I did.
Okay. It's kind of important to take a look at that. Basically what happened was, you know, even before the last meeting, this was something I was thinking about, you know, we do a lot of grant funding. We do things like this every year. This is the first time that I think that, that something has been brought before the council that would be more than a grant or, or something to that effect. This is something that would, that would be more of a direct investment back into our community. Part of the resolution and part of what we put out if we decide to fund this is that this will, this will be spread out across our entire county. So, you know, they did something like this in Noblesville. So what we did was we took the application that they had. It's a lot different from what they did, but it gave us a little bit of a template. And if you look, there's some parameters here. It's designed for small businesses that were forced to close due to the COVID-19 crisis. That will be something that, that is a big part of that. They had to have been forced to close. We don't want people that were, I mean, it might have affected a lot of different small businesses, but we want people that were, that had that direct hit from, from government. If you look at the parameters, does everybody get the application in front of them that was handed to you by Dawn? You look at the parameters, must be in good standing. There's those, there's some eligible use of funds. You can see that there. They got any grants with any national, state or local elected office holders with business interests are not going to be eligible. So, you know, if you're, if you're a person that has a certain type, that certain type of business, if you're on any city council, any county government, any township race, you would not be eligible for that. And when you put in here, not received abatements, loans, grants or incentives from federal government, state of Indiana, any local government entity. If you've read, read what happened with the, the federal government part, a lot of those people were starved out and those, those grant funds were, were used up quick before. I don't know anybody in our community that, that had access to that. So there's a lot of bureaucracy between that. I think with county government, we'll have a three person committee. And, you know, our, our stuff will get out to the community and it'll be spread out across the community being a direct investment back in the community. And I'll take any questions that you guys have on this.
I was going to read the entire resolution just for the, the public's sake and for the record.
All right. Well, on the motion to approve, I need to amend the motion if we're going to do it that way to move the additional preparation amount on this from 250,000 to a million.
Well, you may want to wait on that.
Till we get to the next, that next one?
I think so, because I'm in favor at 250, but I'm not in favor at a million.
Okay, well then.
If he wants to retract his motion, I support the $1 million. So my second would stand. Or my, I mean, I would, I would make that motion.
Okay.
Is that what you want to do? You want to make it a million?
Yeah, because I, it sounds like from Chris, we'd have to amend that anyway. So I want to. I wanna make that motion to, now if you look at, the reason for that is, we looked at the impact that, that Noblesville had, that's just a little bit of a test case, they did $250,000, but they had a million dollars total request there before it was all said and done. We started out only looking at the northern part of the county, actually there was a conversation with Councilman Schwartz that convinced me to kinda look at that and, you know, continuous conversations with Commissioner Everett, that we need to do something countywide. 250,000 was intended for the northern part of the county. A million dollar, that's not gonna be enough for, for the entire county. So this is, I mean, and this won't be enough either, this'll go pretty quick, but this'll at least make, let us make some type of impact in our, in the county.
And are we also, you wanna change the title as well if you're talking about a dollar amount and Chris can change the title that's in this resolution?
We might as well make it all match.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
I was gonna say one question, Fred, just for the public to know, the three-person board would be Finance Committee, or can you expand on that, who that would be?
Finance person, we just have one council appointment, I was requesting to do that. The commissioners are, this has to go in front of the Board of Commissioners, the reason for that is it's going to be a county. And the auditor already has a pick, so that's our three-person committee. I started out with just doing four, with a couple of conversations, nobody, nobody I talked to, everybody wanted to be an uneven number just in case there was a disputed vote, so. So we changed it down to three.
Understandable.
So.
Before I read it, does anybody else wanna have a question? Again, this is Resolution CC 05062020-01, a resolution of the Hamilton County Council appropriating funds for the establishment of a small business resilient grant and the program is gonna be taught, called Hamilton County Stabilization Fund for Small Business. Whereas the Hamilton County Council is the fiscal body of Hamilton County per Indiana Code, and I'm gonna say 36-2-3-2, and whereas the Governor of Indiana has issued executive orders 20-04, 20-08, 20-10 and 20-14, which have limited travel, restricted public gatherings and mandated the closure of non-essential businesses in response to the COVID-19 public health crisis, whereas the prolonged health crisis has put a tremendous and increasing strain on small business within Hamilton County. Whereas the council has exercised strong or sound fiscal management over the course of many years, which has allowed it to maintain strong cash reserves. Whereas the council desires to use its strong financial position during this unprecedented time to assist, sustain and save small businesses in the county. And whereas the council has worked with the Hamilton County Commissioners on the establishment of the Hamilton County Stabilization for Small Business Program. And whereas the program will assist eligible business within Hamilton County to maintain payroll and cover fixed costs such as rent if their operations have been suspended or otherwise reduced to the health crisis. Now therefore be it resolved by the Hamilton County Council that an additional appropriation of $1 million is approved as a one-time capital contribution to the newly created Hamilton County Small Business Stabilization Small Business Fund to support small businesses throughout the county which have been negatively impacted by the ongoing COVID-19 health crisis. Example of the application to receive such funding is attached and outlines conditions, criteria to receive funding from the program. The actual application will be available online at www.hamiltoncounty.in.gov. The program shall be administered by the commissioners in a manner that is consistent with the purposes described in this resolution identified in the application. Anybody else wanna have any comments before we do the rule call?
Just real quick, Fred, are you wanting to be that person or?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, that's what I'm looking at now, I, you know, we'll start it like that, but I'd like to communicate with other council members as this thing's going on. It doesn't have to be, you know, one official person at every single thing, you know what I mean, but I.
I would prefer that you would be the head person, I mean, it's your idea, it's your baby and you did a real, great job of this.
I would be the point person on it, but if there's some type of meeting that comes up, I would like to be able to put another council member in there if they, if they express interest in it, I know Steve has, so.
Okay.
If that, if it comes to that, you know.
Well, in my discussion part, I can support the 250,000, but the million dollars I cannot because of the great unknown concerning the future and the primary need to provide for county operations first and foremost. Speaking of Mike Reuter tonight, or earlier today, he said again that need to be cautious. And what happens if there's a second wave of the virus in the fall? Will state and federal government lockdown society once again? We're definitely an uncharted area and I prefer to stay steady and cautious to ride out the storm before spending an increased amount in a, what I would say is a very admirable feel-good, do something activity which may or may not be beneficial to keeping small businesses afloat. There is a very real possibility this program could generate more bad feelings than good ones, so that's my two cents.
The feel-good portion is, is.
Hey Fred, why don't you let everybody?
Okay, go ahead.
Fred, talk to me, I like the idea, all the paperwork I had before I sat down this evening said $250,000, I was on board for that. By the time we got ready to vote, it went to a million dollars. I'm good for 250, I'm not good for a million dollars.
I would just say, I'm good with 250, I would, not saying I'm not against a million, I just would wanna see more of the financials and have a harder conversation and really lean on Finance Committee on your thoughts on that based on what Rick had said earlier. I just worry about a second wave or what's that gonna do to us that come three months from now, we're going into budget session, we're like, uh-oh, we've offered a million here, we really need another 300 of that back for something else. So that's my, my, my only concern, I would be open to doing the 250, a month from now, if they come back and say, hey, we're in a real situation here, we would like to appropriate more money for this or whatever it might be, I'd be more interested or game for that. I just would like more discussion, that's all.
Ken, Amy, do you guys have anything before we vote?
I'm supportive of the million dollars, it doesn't, just because we put it there doesn't necessarily mean it has to be spent, we'll have commissioners and people involved in, in deciding where that money is to go and we can put the fiscal restraint that we need to during that process of, of looking at applications, in my mind.
A second. So I'm in support of the million dollars at this time.
I, I would be in favor of the split in the difference, I think that 500,000 would be a, a fair number, you know, at 250,000, I, I think Fred's made a good point that that's 25 businesses, that's really not very many in Hamilton County. So I, I feel that if we double that and make, make good on 50 businesses, I think that could really make a huge impact. So I would be in favor of 500,000.
It says up to 10,000, so not everybody would necessarily get the max.
I understand.
Yeah, the, the thing is about this, if you look at it, this is not something I brought forth, I didn't read, you know, I'm not one trying to bring big grants in and this is not a feel-good thing, so you putting that in there is completely ridiculous.
It was my opinion.
Yeah, it's not a feel-good thing, basically what you're looking at is you're looking at a, a, a serious economic situation. We've managed to manage county finances in a very prudent manner and this is, this is the time to where a lot of the community is in need, we can invest back in the community. This isn't handing $3 million to a humane society to try to get puppy votes, this is trying to basically invest back in our community. Now there's gonna be, you could sit there and say that it's feel-good, now I would say trying to give 3 million for puppies in an election year is more feel-good. This right here is trying to put something out in the community to help sustain small businesses that are getting hit hard right now under no fault of their own. So that's a completely different thing than things we've done in the past, it's a completely different thing than the discussion that we've, than the discussions we have and the arguments that we have during grant proceedings. This is basically people that have been paying taxes for years and are getting hit hard by no fault of their own and we're basically just trying to get back to the community. This million dollars, I guarantee you brought Reuter here, we can sustain that. The, I mean, honestly, the grant could go for more, but I think that that's a good number that we could spread across the county, there's gonna be people that aren't gonna get it, there's gonna be people that aren't happy, you're right, that'll create some bad feelings, but I think in general, we'll get through this, we'll get through the second, we'll get through a second wave, county will be fine and we'll, we'll be able to say that we manage things properly in a fiscally responsible manner and when the time came, we were able to step up and do something for our community that was forced into a shutdown that, and were, it put into these business situations under no fault of their own.
I would just say, knowing Fred quite a long time, this is not a feel-good thing, I, Fred is a very, Fred is a very fiscal conservative guy, he doesn't like to spend money, I, I, but I think it's a great thing, my only thing is if I knew for sure Reuter said we could do a million, I'd feel a lot better.
Right. He didn't say that.
Okay, and I, and I've, like, I'm like you, I didn't know about a million until 10, 15 minutes ago.
And I, I think the people who are gonna get it are the people who have the experience in Xbox and gaming, because they're gonna be able to hit enter the fastest when they have their documents ready and.
What's the difference on 250?
The whole money is gonna be gone, there's gonna be no leftover money, there's gonna be no discretion to hold money back.
So what's your, what's your, what's your, why are you supporting 250 then? You shouldn't be supporting anything if you have that attitude about it.
Well, because that's what origin, no, it's originally, that's what it came in and it sounds like it's a bait and switch that we go from 250 to a million.
Your reasoning.
I called a question.
All right, call the question, your reasoning's flawed.
I have no flaw in my reasoning.
Amy, I think seconded it.
What?
Did Amy, you seconded question?
No, she's.
We did it earlier.
She has some discussion. I wanted to say something, I think, you know, again, looking at it from the dollar amount, it's, it's up to 10,000 and the max, obviously if you're looking at it, would be 100 businesses. I don't foresee us, a committee, if you will, steering approvals of dollars without going through the rigorous review process. So again, it's just allowing the leeway of up to a million dollars to be spent potentially for 100 businesses. And so I think that's important to reiterate, it's not saying, oh yes, we'll give, no, it's guaranteed. It's the opportunity for people, for businesses to apply and then the oversight is delivered by the committee in which is selected. So I think that's just something to keep in mind, that's all.
Amy, if, if you read the program, you're gonna have. Pardon me?
I called for the question.
Okay, I can finish, I mean, the question is, Amy, it's less than a week of review, so it's, it's a quick turnaround time to get money in the people's hands, so.
I understand.
Okay. Don, can we do the roll call, please?
We do this, we make sure, cause the way the discussion's gone, what's currently before you is the amended resolution, which is two amendments, the, the title is amended to match the program name and the amount is amended from 250 to a million dollars.
Right.
Cause everybody's been throwing out different numbers to make sure, that's what's, we're voting on right now.
I'm ready.
Alexander?
I'm sorry, I could not hear very well, was, what is, are we at the amended million dollar or are we at 250,000?
Million.
At the million.
This is the million or half a million?
The million.
The million.
It's a million.
Thank you, sorry. All right, yes.
Beaver?
No.
Glenn?
Yes.
Hearn?
Yes.
Masalomani?
Yes.
McKinney?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
All right, it passes five to two. Now we have budget instructions and we have the template of what we've done in the past and I don't think we made any changes or Mike suggested any changes based on the current situation. Has everybody had a chance to read it?
Yeah, does, are we addressing the employee pay in this budget instruction, Madam Auditor?
Don, correct me if I'm wrong, but right now it's giving them the opportunity to move up one.
Level.
Level, but we have not dealt with adopting the 20, 2021 pay scale. You, we're gonna do that at budget time.
Yeah, we had that discussion in finance, so what I'm saying to the council members is, last year you went up one step plus you got a raise. So at finance, we discussed, given the, the economic times we're in, instead of doing one step plus the raise, the budget instruction would say one step and we'll wait till budget time to decide on the raise or not, and that's between 900 and a million dollars on the raise. The step is one thing, if you include them all together, it's over $2 million, isn't it, Don?
That's correct.
But if you split them out, the one step up in their progression and the raise, that would be 2 million, we discussed at Finance Committee, we would put out in budget instruction, they do the step, but we will hold on budget instructions telling, telling them they're gonna get the raise until we get to budgets and decide what our finances are then, because if you put it in budget instructions, they assume that's what's happening. That is the employees.
So basically what you're saying, Brad, is we need a lot of, little water going to the bridge here?
No, I'm just, I'm just, the budget instructions that you've got anticipate the step, but not the raise.
I understand.
And we will decide that at budget time.
And the raise will be advertised, but it'll be in our budget.
Right.
As, so it can be deleted if needed.
If it looks like we need to hold back, one other thing that Reuter passed along to us at the finance meeting was that two years from now, when things recover and private business has recovered and they're starting to give, give raises to track the top people, will be exactly the time when we have no money to give raises because ours is two years in the rear. How about that for happy news?
Hey Brad.
That's what's in the budget instructions, one step, no raise, the raised money's in our budget, we'll decide at budget time.
So do you wanna put that in those budget instructions?
No, that, that's the way budget instructions set up.
Do we wanna, on the budget instructions, do we want to, do we wanna have line by line for some of this professional services? I, I don't, you know, I think there's some of the stuff we wanna clamp down on and keep a closer eye on when we're in these conditions. And is that hinder you guys, Mark and Board of Commissioners? We could have more clear indication of what professional services is being spent on?
It's in here.
It is?
Yeah.
What does it say?
Provide breakdown of 2021 budget requests within each line item by vendor in each series.
Okay, so that would be, that would include professional services, what's gonna be spent on that? Okay.
I'll move that we pass the budget instructions.
Second. All right.
Mr. President, Ken was trying to ask a question.
I'm sorry, Ken.
The question I had was, corporate America during this time period is taking changes, they're making changes to benefits, specifically like 401Ks and matches and things of that nature, outside of, outside of salary increases and things like that which are obvious, have, are we statutorily allowed to reduce some of those matches to levels that create some savings?
Yeah, that's, that's solely our discretion.
We're not forced to match those federal ones?
Not 401K, you're talking, I thought you said like deferred comp, or you're talking about the state's retirement plan?
Uh, any, any type of benefit that we're paying into that would go, that would go into a savings or a, I think the, perf is probably the ideal.
Okay.
No, we can't touch perf.
The perf, we pay employee portion that we always have and we could turn and make the employee pay it, but I don't think that would be palatable right now.
The answer to Ken's question is, yeah, those, those are at the council discretion.
Okay. I just saw in the benefits where it had the listing, the, some of the deferred compensation matches and things of that nature. So, okay, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. Maybe the roll call, please.
I did.
Jeff Hearn? Alexander?
Aye.
Beaver?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. Approval of a grant appropriation. Fund 8256 discretionary capital appropriation. $389.72.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Amy seconded it, and a roll call.
Alexander?
Aye.
Beaver?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we will open the public hearing considering additional appropriations. And the first item is from EMA for $3,443 for, uh, social security benefits of temporary part-time staff due to the COVID emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Maybe the roll call, please.
Uh, Alexander?
Aye.
Beaver?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Number two is the, uh, $250,000 for the Small Business Stabilization Grant. And this is what was advertised. So this cannot be changed, correct, Dawn? Robin?
Right.
You have to advertise the other 750 next month.
Correct.
So, you have a motion?
Wait a minute. We got 250 on our agenda.
Right.
It can't be changed.
You can adopt this, and then we'll do the remaining additional in June.
So we need a resolution?
Or would we vote it down and then approve in June the million?
I don't think you wanna do that.
No, I would adopt the 250.
And then, and then, and then appropriate 750,000 more?
Not
Okay.
Not, that'll be in June.
Okay.
Yeah.
So would a, would a counselor have to vote again for 750,000?
Next month.
Next month.
I got you.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Do we have a motion yet?
So moved.
Second.
For 250,000. And the roll call, please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Beaver?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously for 250,000. Number three, Buildings and Grounds COVID-19 Additional, 75,447. And again, this is related to the emergency. You may.
Amy, um, this is the one where A, 3, 4, 5,
Aye.
And D are all related to the COVID-19, if you wanted to
Can I combine 3, 4, 5, and D in my motion?
I'll second the motion.
I'm sorry, what are you trying to combine?
These are the ones we talked about, 3, 4, 5, and D.
Okay, okay. A, 3, 4, and 5. Okay, gotcha.
And Amy moved to do that.
Okay, and the other two are for ISS and EMA. And
That one's maintenance out of the CCD fund.
1138 is CCD.
And that's maintenance.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion for that. Steve, you motioned?
Yes.
And a second for that? I'll, I'll second it.
I had Amy.
We had Amy.
Amy motioned, I second. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Amy and Steve. All right. Maybe we have the roll call, please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Beaver?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. And now we have a sheriff request. 144 Amendment Reclassification.
How about, uh, we do A, B, and C together?
Okay, A, B, and C.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, Ken?
I'll second that.
Okay. When you said, how about that, Brad, I didn't take that was your motion.
That would be a motion.
That's your motion. Ken seconded.
How about a motion?
Any discussion? No discussion? Sheriff, would you just explain briefly what it is?
Absolutely. So we have, at our juvenile center, we're required to have a physical education instructor.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, we have one. She has been working with us. She's a part-time employee. This is to, she's working under the Part-Time Corrections Officer job description. This is essentially moving her to, um, a specialized jobs description for a physical education teacher, and then transferring the funds to that new line. This was studied by WIS, and, um, this was their recommendation. It was also looked at in a poll by the Personnel Committee with a favorable recommendation.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, anybody? A roll call, please.
Uh, yes. Ken Alexander?
Yes.
Beaver?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, Fund 1025, Hamilton County Airport Authority, $15,000 transfer.
Is, uh, Bill Frye on our, uh, on our, uh, Skype or theme in there or anywhere?
Yes, I am, Brad.
All right, Bill. No, Bill Frye. Oh, there's Bill.
There he is.
Bill, give us the rundown on this, will you? Bill?
Capital, the capital transfer, I'm not quite sure what that is. I'm here for the other one, for the letter E.
The rainy day fund.
I think that's something the auditor's office, the
What is the
Item B, I think the transfer is being done within the auditor's office?
It's state and local shares for professional services under an FAA grant.
I'm sorry. I'll make a motion on that.
Second.
Second.
The roll call, please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Beaver?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
A quick question, Robin.
That passes unanimously.
Do we, um, stop listing people's sponsor names on additional appropriations?
This is a transfer.
I'm not, in general.
It's a transfer, no. Not that I'm aware of.
I, I just didn't see any of them on here, any names on any of these today, tonight.
Did I not put those? That's mine.
Okay, okay. No, there's not, there's none listed.
Nice catch, Brad. And that passes unanimously. We have Fund 1222 Communications, 144 Amendment.
Miss?
Amy moved.
Second.
And this is a person taking on a team lead duty and getting cert pay added of $2,080 here. And roll call, please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Beaver?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. We have Rainy Day Fund 1186 requesting 25,765, Airport Authority. And, uh, this is covering a shortfall in the, uh, lease rental bond of 2014.
All right, Bill, now you're on.
Oh, I'm on. Yeah, the, uh, as you all know, we, we have a, um, when the airport purchased the buildings, uh, a few years ago, we took out a, a lease bond, that's being handled to the Hamilton County Public Building Corporation. And payments on that bond are due in July and January. And earlier this year and last month, our FBO, which is a fixed base operator, which is the business at the airport that essentially handles all their services. They, they handle the fueling, they handle the service, they handle maintenance on aircraft. They maintain the terminal, and they have a staff of about 32 people that, that work for them. Now, because their business, their income, their cash flow is largely dependent on fuel sales, ramp fees, services, and transient, uh, rental space, that business dropped off. They're down to about 10% of the fuel flow that they were this time, this, for the month of April that they were last year. So basically, they came to us and they said, we would like to have a deferment of our bond payments for three months while we maintain, you know, handle our cash flow. And they, and, and as a result of that, if we grant them that way, that deferment, our bond fund will be short $25,000 or 25,765 dollars for the July 15 payment. So the request is a, um, county put in the money that will cover that bond payment so that we can make the July payment, not default on the bonds. And then the FBO will make up the lost income over a period of the next year, couple of years on a monthly basis, once their business recovers. Well, that's basically what we're asking for, just to make sure we don't, we don't default on the bond in, in July.
Right. Thank you, Bill.
I have a question.
Okay.
Is there a contract in place for the repayment over the next year or two?
There will be, yes. We, we don't have it in place yet, but there will be.
And will you provide that to the
Yeah, they have, they have been very open in terms of saying they definitely will. This is not a, this is not a waiver. This is a deferment, and we will amend their lease agreement to, uh, include that deferment. I don't know, is Mike, is Mike Howard there tonight?
No.
He's not, but he's drafting it, right?
Yeah, he's, he's working on it, so.
Um, I would just request that, along with the commissioners, are, are you on the commissioners' agenda yet for that contract?
They don't need it.
A contract?
I would assume.
What contract?
There's gotta be some kind of agreement, a repayment agreement, isn't there?
Generally, generally, what I passed along to them, when the FBO asks for deferment of three months of their rent, and their rent's what makes the bond payment?
Their, their rent is 20, is 23,100 dollars.
23, so I, what I said to the airport board, because they at first wanted to come to the county council for that three months worth. Now, will, you come and ask us for enough to make the first bond payment, and then you take the next two out of your budget, which would be the airport's budget, and then work out an agreement between the FBO and the Airport Authority to pay that money back. That's what they're working on now.
So just so I have this clear, so the county is actually giving the money to pay the bond payment?
Shortfall.
The shortfall. And then is the county going to be repaid? That 25,000?
No, that's not the plan.
Okay, so this is actually a grant?
No, he said it's deferral. It's gonna be paid back.
It'll be paid back. The, the money, the 25,000 dollars, the, 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 the SBO will pay back three months of, of lease. So what is that, 69,000 dollars? And 69,300 dollars is really what, what they're going to owe in additional, in addition to their current lease obligations. So we will amend the lease to, to ensure that they pay that over some, a period of time to be, and, and I told them, I told them it can be a maximum of three years to pay that back.
Yeah, it wasn't originally, it was originally the end of the year, wasn't it, Bill?
Oh, there is.
No, not for, not for the lease payments. The end of the year was, what had to do with, with utility payments and fuel flow fees. And what the airport has applied for and, and has been granted, uh, appropriation under the CARES Act for airports. So we will be getting a grant from the FAA that is specifically designed to allow airports to cover operating expenses that are not being paid during the downturn. So we will use that FAA money to cover the utilities expenses. You, typically, we get, the county pays the utility bill, and then the FBO and the other tenants reimburse us for their portion of those bills. We have separate meters on each, on each tenant. So
So, so what is, what is the status of the FBO getting federal PPE or whatever, PPP? Have they got any federal grants as a business operation?
Yeah, they have, uh, they've applied for and received a PPP loan from the SPA.
So wouldn't that include rent? Wouldn't that include rent?
PPP helps cover their, their salaries.
Yeah, doesn't that include rent?
Doesn't, they cannot pay the rent with that, no.
Maybe I'm thinking of another one.
PPP is payroll protection program, so it's, it's strictly to, to maintain his, uh, staff and, and pay furloughed people. They furloughed five people, they retained about 32.
You know, I mean, you're just stretching it out.
No, I'm, I'm for it. I'm just
My, my question
They want rent deferred, and we've got bond payments that need to be made.
I get it. I'm for it.
Yeah. My question's this. I just wanted, so I wasn't clear. Are we gonna be, county, be reimbursed into the rainy day fund eventually for the shortfall that we're paying out, or no?
Basically, the answer, Jeff, is maybe.
We're just giving 25,000 extra to the airport, is what it basically comes down to.
Let's put it that way. The maybe not.
It's, it's 25,000 is going to Airport Authority, which could roll back at the end of the year.
PPP does not cover rent. There are other federal programs that do, that they applied for. They may not have got them yet. And there's another federal grant coming to the Airport Authority. Haven't received yet.
Because of the COVID.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so
Yeah, they're getting that extra money.
Okay.
How much federal money we get, we get?
The airport qualifies for $157,000 under the CARES Act for airport.
Thank you.
And our, I don't know when we'll actually see that grant. It could be next week, it could be in June. I, I don't know when it will actually get processed through. My intention is to take about half of that money and put it into the bond fund once we receive it from the government, so that we're covered through, through the, you know, a few months into the next bond payment period. So in case the business environment does not turn around, we're not coming back to you again in three months or six months and asking for another money to pay the bond fee.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Need a motion first.
Make the motion to approve.
And I'm a little still confused. What are exactly are we making a motion on to approve?
We are gonna take 25,000 dollars out of our rainy day and pay our bond payments.
That we might not get back?
We might not.
Okay. But it is
Our renter asked for three months deferment on their rent.
Okay, may not get it back from the Airport Authority. The renter is going to pay the Airport Authority. Okay. So I would just look at it as a $25,000 additional appropriation to the Airport Authority.
Okay.
Is what it boils down to.
Okay, I got it now.
Roll call, please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Uh, Beaver?
Aye.
Glenn?
No.
Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes six to one.
I just, I wanna point out one thing while Bill's still on the thing. Bill is a volunteer. He was appointed to be on the aviation board. Now, since our, our director left and our new one that we're hiring is not here yet, him and the other board members, which are volunteers, are making multimillion-dollar decisions on county facilities. That's the kind of position we put them in. I appreciate, Bill, and I appreciate all the other board members. They come in, you know, it's kinda like being on the plane, and all of a sudden, you, you gotta make all these business decisions with federal money going in and out. I'm, I'm surprised the guys don't just throw up their hands and run out the door.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate it, Bill, and all your crew.
You locked the door, Brad. Where's the key?
All right, uh, Fund 1206, Local Health Trust Fund Transfer, $10,000, uh, Purchasing Software. Need money in the line item, so we're short.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Beaver?
Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Um, and Barry, in case you wanna leave, again, kudos to you and your department, you know, for everything you're doing during the pandemic. Appreciate it. And, um, thank you, thank you. Last item, we have, uh, Emergency Prep Grant, um, 4,72166. And again, this is, um, with COVID-related expenses.
So moved.
Second.
The roll call, please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Beaver?
Aye. Aye.
Glenn?
Aye.
Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?